So I'm Bill Irwin, I'm the Chair of the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And I welcome all of you here tonight. The first thing on our agenda, opening the meeting at 7:04 is the, are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to welcoming further introductions. And as I mentioned, I'm Bill Irwin, I'm also the, one of the representatives from Bakersfield. And let me pull up my participant list, I'll call your name if you don't mind to introduce yourself and your municipality. We'll start with Al Lojel.
Al Lojel from the town of St. Albans.
Thank you, sir. Richard Noel.
Richard Noel from the town of Highgate.
Rowena Brown.
Rowena Brown from Richford.
Thank you, and you have to excuse me, I have a puppy in the house. We'll go to Barclay.
Barclay Morris from Grand Isle.
Great. Lynn.
Lynn Douglas Fletcher.
Thank you, Lynn. Colleen.
Colleen Stein Fairfax.
Thank you. Marietta.
Marietta Schultz in St. Albans Town.
Thank you. Andy.
Andy Olling, North Hero.
Thanks, Andy. And Peter.
Peter Zemore, South Hero.
Great, thank you, Peter. We'll go to Yvonne.
Yvonne Dandaran Franklin.
Thank you, Yvonne. Brian.
Brian Dubey Fairfield.
Thank you, sir. Um, we'll then go to Deah.
Deah Dublin Staff.
Great, thank you, Deah. And, um, excuse me, as I bounce around here, Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Nance Swanton Village.
Thank you. Harold.
Harold Garrett Swanton Town.
Very good, thank you, Harold. Let's see, I'm going to, we have others that are here, I don't know.
Bill, I should have, I, I meant to tell you, we have several new board members joining us this evening, too.
Yeah, and then there's also a number of members from the community here tonight as well. Do you want to introduce the new folks, because I wouldn't, with so many members from the public, I'm not sure which is which.
Sure, so we have Matt, do you want to go first?
Sure, I'm Matt Freedom from St. Albans City.
And then we have, I think, is it Jesse or Jessica Eagles? Yeah, she's having mic issues, but Jessica Eagles and from Ennisburg Town.
Great, thanks, Jessica, and.
And then Mary Catherine.
Hi, Mary Catherine Batiano from Isle of Wight.
Great, welcome.
And Catherine hasn't introduced herself yet.
Oh.
Almost always safer for last.
I'm Catherine Dimitrik on staff.
Great, thank you. And we do have some members of the public here. And that is our next topic on the agenda, if there are any comments that members of the public would make. This is a time set aside specifically for that. If you want to, you could just unmute yourself and speak. Okay, don't hear any, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the minute, are the minutes of the May 2022 meeting? Is there a motion relative to the minutes?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes as provided, and a second, is there any discussion of the minutes?
Just as I usually do, I had emailed Catherine late today, some minor typographical comments, nothing that changes the material part of the minutes. And I don't have to keep saying that if you don't want me to, because I do it every month, so if it's just a given, that's fine. If it's something that's material, I'll bring it up, but I just.
I think, I think either way is, it's appropriate to state it, and we appreciate your diligence in giving it a good editorial review, Elizabeth. And would Al and, forgot who seconded.
It was me.
Okay, would you both?
I will accept the amendment as proposed, the amendment says, changes as proposed.
Great, thanks, Al. And Elizabeth, I assume you will as well as.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion of the minutes? All right, not hearing any, all those in favor of the minutes as amended through Elizabeth's editorial review, please say aye.
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 And the opposed, say nay. And are there any abstentions?
All abstained, just because I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, so Matt has abstained, thank you, Matt, and again, welcome. I don't think I got to say that to you. We'll then move on to our next, and that is, on the agenda, we had a board discussion with Dr. Jude on, from Abundant Sun, on advancing racial equity. Unfortunately, as I hope many of you saw in Catherine's email today, she's unfortunately still ill with COVID, I believe, and in fact, yes, and we wish her the best in recovering from that rapidly and completely. But she is not able to meet with us tonight. That session will be rescheduled for the next available as soon as possible, so maybe, for example, our next meeting. We'll then go on to commission reports, and we start then with finance and operations, and we'll look to our treasurer Harold Garrett for that.
Thank you, Bill. Your financial report is on page seven, and that's your profit and loss sheet and the actuals. And the balance sheet would be on page eight. And we're nearing the end of our year, and so you will see that there's a lot of that are close to 100% or in that neighborhood, and most of them will be at 100% or within that neighborhood by the end of, by the 1st of July, which is Friday. And some of the stuff comes in a little slow, as Catherine will attest to, because of our billing cycle. But financially, we're in pretty sound shape, and if there's any questions on the profit and loss sheet, I will do my best to answer them. And if I can't, I'm 110% positive that Catherine can.
Well, thank you, Harold, I'll start. I noticed that the Healthy Roots line item in income actually well over, and that's a nice thing, so maybe we just note that, and perhaps we could just get a sense of why we have that good tidying.
Catherine, I believe you explained that to us at our meeting, but I, I'm using my age. I don't remember what you told us.
Well, Lynn can jump in here, too, as your board representative on the Healthy Roots Committee, if she wants to add anything. But I will just note that I think two things, one, we underestimated the amount of revenue that we thought the team would be able to raise via fundraising in this particular year. And two, the team did an excellent job of fundraising.
Great, yeah, it's, it's, it sounds like it, and I hope we can continue that. I think it's wonderful to live in a community where people understand how challenging it is for many in our community to get food and to, for them to make these donations and help us, help them, it's great.
Yeah, and one of the pieces of the underestimation was that we anticipated the Everyone Eats program to end almost a year ago, and it's been continued, you know, in three-month cycles with each time, but it's been continued through the entire fiscal year. And that's been an amazing program that's helped both our restaurants and catering companies, as well as the people who receive the meals.
Great. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And one other comment that I will make, we did meet, and I believe, though, you wasn't able to attend that meeting, but at the finance meeting that we had, and Catherine and Amy went over line-by-line item on finance and our expenses and everything. And we made a few recommendations, but at this time, we're not, I believe, Catherine, we're not ready to present them, am I correct?
No, it's on the agenda for later.
Okay.
But, but there, but there are some things we're working on that we're not ready to bring to.
Right, right, things that we're working on, that we're not ready to present to the board, yeah. Thank you.
And then the one thing I just wanted to point out about the financial report, for the benefit of those who are new at looking at our financial reports, is you'll, you'll see that we have, we're currently showing an $83,000 deficit, which might be something that you wonder, well, why isn't anybody asking about that? And the majority of the contracts and grants that we work under are reimbursement grants, and we are on an accrual accounting system. So we haven't yet billed for our April and May expenses under those, and we haven't been paid for them. But we will be paid, we just haven't yet. So we've accrued the expenses of staff time and direct expenses, and we won't bill for those until the end of the quarter, and then we'll get reimbursed, and it will all even out. That's why no one's asking why we have an $8,000 deficit toward the end of the fiscal year.
I do have a question that I shouldn't have the answer to, and I don't, which is why I'm asking. Are, it, does any of this carry over? I, I was looking in particular, like travel expenses, I know it's only 5,200, but I'm, obviously, we didn't travel, or staff didn't travel as much. So will that 5,200 carry over to next year?
It, it doesn't carry over in that line item, but it does, we do not give it back. We can, we try to use it in an area that needs it. Is that the correct assumption that I should be putting out, Catherine?
Yeah, that was, that was a good answer, and the real, and the, and the overall answer is it depends. Yes, we, we have a couple of funding sources where we get the money, the grant upfront, and if we don't spend it, we can carry it over. And we have many of our grants that cover fiscal years. But in the case of trap, like something like travel, it's mostly an administrative expense, so if we don't spend it, then we just don't spend it. And then we have a new budget amount for it next year.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks for that question, Elizabeth, that is a good one. All right, we'll move on, if there's no other questions on finance or operations to personnel. Lori, forgive me, I did not ask you to introduce yourself, so you can do that now.
Lori Rupel from Fletcher. We're still another, we're another 12 days, 13 days out from our meeting to start staff reviews and et cetera. So we'll be meeting on the 12th, right? Is that right, Catherine? I think so, on the 12th.
Yeah.
Keeping that in my mind, but yeah. So later we'll have reports to make.
What time?
Six.
Six, I think, too.
Six p.m.
Yes.
Great, thanks for that reminder, Lori, and busy time of year for the Personnel Committee. Any questions for Lori? All right, hearing and seeing none, we'll go to Executive Committee. The Executive Committee did meet this past month, we looked at the budget as well. We also reviewed the nomination committee that gave its report. You'll see that's an action item for this particular meeting later. And we went over a variety of other topics, including our foundation from Kirk. But no other action items that need to be reported here. And I'll move then, unless there's questions about Executive Committee, project review. Bob is not here tonight. I can report that we just finished the meeting, it was actually a special meeting. There was an earlier meeting in the month of June, and let me verify if there's any project review notes here from that meeting. Do not see project review for June. But the meeting had some permits that came before the committee. They were all met without identifying any that required action at the board level here at the commission, the Board of Commissioners. They were handled within the meeting itself, therefore, they were all of not a substantial regional impact, nor out of compliance with the regional plan. And then we had a special meeting tonight, tonight's meeting was a tower for communications antennas in Ennisburg, that meeting was special, we're going to have to ask for a continuation on that. And we'll likely have a meeting early in the second week of July, so that we can handle that. Or we'll have to look towards perhaps a, another staff member helping us with that, because Emily will be on vacation. So Catherine and Emily, we should talk about that project review committee. We had a large number of members of the public that attended that meeting this evening. We got their email addresses, and we'll want to let them know when that next meeting is, because we were unable to hear everyone with the relatively abbreviated agenda or our time for the meeting tonight. Are there any questions or comments about project review committee? Okay, don't hear any, don't see any hands. We'll move then to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and Harold, are you able to report for that tonight?
Yes, I can, Bill. We actually met for the first time in person. And thanks to Alan at St. Albans Town, he hosted us at his new garage, and we had a very good meeting. And it was good to have everybody, we were able to space out, it was great to see everybody. The Transportation Committee met on June 10th, then reviewed the Physical Year 22 Transportation Planning and Initiative Work Program, recommended approval by the Northwest to the full board of the Northwest Regional Planning Committee. Proving the work plan will be on the board's agenda, and that TAC will help annual elections of its officers. And thanks to the TAC Committee, they re-elected me as the Chair for another year, and Peter Magna has re-elected his vice chair.
Very good, thank you, Harold. And again, thanks for stepping up to serve the committee and the commission again. We'll move on then, if there's no questions for the TAC, to energy and climate. I know there was a meeting, I'm not sure if there's anyone here that would like to report from that. I was out of town and unable to make that meeting. And you, Bob's not here tonight.
I think Peter was there and maybe Barclay, so I can give a try, and you two, you can add in if you, if you'd like. We did get a great overview from Emily Cleft and Marlena Valenta, our two staff folks, working with the committee on the existing regional energy plan and what needs to be in our next regional energy plan, so we can start thinking about what that will look like. And then we also, I gave a quick overview of the open meeting law for folks who didn't know about that yet.
We, we also agreed that we were probably going to skip the next two months, and Marlena is going to collect a bunch of resources and get them out to us, so hopefully, we can walk into the next meeting a little more educated as to exactly where we're going to be going.
Thank you for saying that, Barclay, because your talk about timing and calendar reminded me that, final thing that we talked about is that although we anticipated the regional energy plan update would take a similar schedule to the overall regional information that, for data, is not available yet, and probably won't really be until late summer or early fall. So it'll be on a little bit of a different schedule than the overall regional plan because of that.
And your recollection that we had the open meeting law discussion, I was at that meeting. So Al, I'm sorry, I should not have said I wasn't. Good, I'm glad I made that. All right, we'll move on, if there's no questions for energy and climate or any further updates from that, to the Brownfields Committee and Elizabeth.
Hi there, we did meet on June 13th, got some updates from Greta. Two of the action items that we took was, one was on the six South River Street, which is the Riviera Hotel. We did, there was an adjustment to the budget, so we did, we did approve additional funds, it wasn't that much. The Phase 2 assessment has started, and if you know the Riviera Hotel, that's very exciting, because it's been years. But some slight movement, so we're, we're very happy about that. The other one was, there was a request to fund the cleanup plan for 74 lower Newton here in St. Albans City. That was $8,320, and we approved taking that out of the revolving loan fund program income. So those were the two action items that we had.
Very good, thank you, Elizabeth. Any questions for Brownfields Committee? All right, glad to see that picking back up, you've replaced a really excellent chair, and I can tell already, we're in good hands again.
Well, I'm not the chair. I had to ask Catherine, I, I report out because I'm the commissioner, but I believe Chip Sawyer is the chair, so, but thank you.
You're welcome.
So you want me to go ahead and do policy and regional plan and policy?
Yeah, you're, you're populating a lot of the reports.
Yeah, and we also met on June 13th, but not at the same time. We are moving forward, we had some, I, I, full disclosure, I was not at the meeting, but the minutes were on the website, so I snagged them. Thank you for, whoever, was that you, Catherine, that took the minutes? Okay, well, they were up there, thank you. So we did have some discussion about some of the sections, those conversations continue, we talked about our outreach plan that will start really in the fall, we don't meet again until September, we're on an every other month schedule, we don't meet until September. But once September hits, we'll meet monthly through March, because we are on a, on a timeframe. So we want to make sure that we stay on target. Kind of the goal is to do some significant outreach. I know that Lynn had talked about reaching out to CCV for some of the younger Franklin County residents. We had talked about maybe committee members reaching out to their respective select boards or boards of trustee. I think I said that right. So we're putting together an outreach plan, and we'll be discussing that in September to keep us on track. The other thing is, and I almost forgot, but in the minutes from the last meeting, we had talked about each of the committees discussing how the equity inclusion statement affects their committees. And this is my gentle reminder that we were looking for input from each of the committees to be brought up at our July meeting, so not this one, obviously, but in July, so here's my friendly reminder.
We appreciate that, Elizabeth, because it is important for each of us in each of the committees to ask our fellow members to discuss how equity, justice, diversity, and inclusion can be incorporated into the work that we do in our committees, and to report out in July about that.
And I think, if there's any questions, I think Catherine and I or any of the other committee members would be happy to offer any guidance or suggestions.
Great, thank you. Al, for the Vermont Economic Progress Council?
There's nothing from our region on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay, thank you for your representation there, Al. We'll move on to Green Mountain Transit, Catherine, do you have anything to report from GMT?
I will add that the board, the board spent considerable time looking at potentially changing the funding formula for the urban municipalities that, in which GMT actually has taxing authority, and those are the urban municipalities in Chittingen County. So it doesn't impact our region at all, but it does, it does affect the overall financial health of the organization. So I'm really hoping that we do move forward with some change to how we not only do local funds in the urban areas, but also in the rural areas of Chittingen County, as well as the rural areas of Franklin, Grand Isle, Washington, and the Loyal Counties. So more, more on that to come. We did also hear the unfortunate news that our general manager, John Moore, will be leaving us and moving on to some sort of position, he's not sure where he's going yet, but balancing this job and his, his partner's job and their children became too much. And so his job was the one to go, which was the best decision for them, and he really has done an amazing job for us. And, and I think we can be thankful we had him to steady the ship during COVID and manage all of the, the just incredible changes and shifts that had to be done to keep transit running during COVID, so he deserves a lot of credit for that.
Great, and thanks for that recognition of job well done. Go to the Healthy Roots Advisory Committee, Lynn.
We're meeting July 7th. But you can see the good, the staff put in a good report on what they've been up to, so you can read that in your packet, it's, it's very impressive.
A source of pride for us all, what we're doing there, and I thank everyone involved. We'll move then, Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation, their report there is by Kirk, and Kirk is unable to make it tonight. From the Executive Committee meeting, there was a brief discussion that we're looking to see where we can contribute. We have a variety of areas where having a 501(c)(3) entity like our foundation can be of benefit to us, but right now, there's nothing specific percolating, unless Catherine, you have something to share with us about the foundation.
I think that the, the Foundation Board did a nice job of having a discussion about what's, what makes sense for this coming fiscal year for goals and, and really settling on the idea that branding the foundation, making sure that our communities and our partners know and remember that we have this nonprofit foundation available to partner on grants and projects for which a nonprofit might be needed, is really going to be the key focus of the coming year, and that seemed doable and manageable and an excellent first step to, to moving forward.
So just to piggyback on that, and it's something that Al had brought up at the last meeting, FCIDC is not a 501(c)(3), we're a 501(c)(4) and found out the hard way that there are some grants that we're not eligible for. So I would anticipate we will be coming to kindly request your services, because we're leaving money on the, potentially on the table.
Great, and hopefully, anyone else in. Great, and hopefully anyone else in the other municipalities, you have some needs of a partner that is a nonprofit. The foundation is here for that purpose. We believe it will help us to do more because we have that opportunity, that that option. Yeah, go ahead, Al.
And it's Catherine also, when the foundation was set up. Did the lawyers help us understand how we as a non as the nonprofit foundation can accept money? And then give it directly to a four oh one, whatever it is. Elizabeth's group and not but be in violation of the law.
We talked about it generally, one of the other things that the. Found that's next on the foundation list is to develop those financial policies. So that we have those that those guidelines clearly in writing, both for when the foundation is doing a project for Northwest Regional. Money Commission and we're transferring funds back and forth, as well as when we're partnering with whether it's a different type of nonprofit or. An unincorporated group or something like that.
Okay.
So that's next.
I just, my, as soon as Nancy said that, it just worried me that. They're rejected because of corporate status and that use outs and we turn money over to them, seems like there's a conflict. I don't know whether it is or not, but this worries me.
Yes, we would want to do something in any way that was in violation of any of the grant guidelines that we might be applying for. And everything would be done within those guidelines, absolutely, yeah, we don't want to just be a conduit to get around rules.
Right, thank you.
But we want to be a conduit to take advantage of more opportunities for the region.
Yep, that I understand, that's good.
Good to clarify the difference.
Always good to ask questions.
I don't want to find myself in the Northwest Correctional Center. Even though I'd still be a St. Albans Town resident.
That's true, you wouldn't have to change your address for the census, you're all right.
Do they do Zoom from there? I don't know. Well, you've got friends out, you know, so that's good. All right, I, we are now to staff reports and not sure who would like to start there.
Well, you just have Daya and I, so Daya, do you have anything new to report?
Well, this last weekend, I conducted a stream cleanup of Stevens Brook. Behind the Humane Society of St. Albans. And some notable trash that we picked out included a mattress, a couple of bikes, a DVD player. And other items. And I'm currently planning a outdoor film screening at St. Albans Town Bay Park. Which will be open to the public, we have St. Albans Museum. Working with us, they will be providing a popcorn machine and it'll also be bring your own snacks. Whatever, it'll be a fun family night in the park. Apart from that. The Clean Water Service Provider. Startup is continuing, we had both boards for Mississauga and Lemoil approve. Subgrant policies. And personnel policies. And that's all I have to report right now.
Well, thanks for your special service to the community, Day. So Catherine.
So I think I has a question.
Dear, when you were at the Stevens Brook, was, did you find anything that would give an identification to the citizen who disposed of that stuff?
I don't think so, it it was all kind of scattered along the like quarter mile that we were walking through. I'm, yeah, I wouldn't say there's, the mattress didn't have a last name on it.
Right, I understand, but if you do find something, we should pursue those people for their letter.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Or simply refer it to the proper authorities.
Right. For for pursuit.
All right.
All right, so I think the my report is that I've been working on basically everything that's in the packet tonight with the budget, the work program and and all the year end and staff. Staff year end check-ins, which are fortunately really easy for us because we have such an amazing group, so it's always just a pleasure. And then also. Working to implement our new project management system, which should be up and running for next week. And so we're pretty excited about that and working on really, Daya mentioned the Clean Water Service Provider, we're really. Needing to get ready to set up our separate separate financial systems to manage that program, so that's going to be a huge lift. And then we are really buckling, going to be buckling down to start pulling apart the regional plan and everybody has an assigned section and everybody's going to start getting to work, so that's pretty exciting. And the car charger should be installed, I think it's next week.
Well.
So that's also great.
So that's an interesting point, is that open to anyone that needs it, they just drop by or is that?
It's not a public station, it's available for staff and visitors to the N R P C. But it's not a public station.
Now, one other question, could could the R P C buy a fully electric car and use that for your staff transportation when you're out in the field?
We could, and we've talked about actually in the past buying a vehicle and trying to figure out if that works. It didn't, we do it, look at it every year or two, and part of the issue that we have is most of us start and end from home when we go places. And so it would make us, we'd have to drive to St. Albans to go get the car, then do the thing and then bring it back. And so it hadn't, it hadn't seemed like something that would get used as much as we want, but we're going to continue to look at it. Especially, we do have funds in the budget to potentially buy Healthy Roots a vehicle. Because they do use a vehicle every day for deliveries and pickups, so it's definitely under consideration.
The other alternative is to allow staff to take that electric vehicle home, go to their place that they're going to visit. And then come to work and pick their car up again to go home the following night.
Yeah. Yeah, so we definitely, we definitely have talked about it and look at it from time to time to see if it would make sense.
It's also modeling behavior for other corporations and nonprofits. Might be expensive, but it's always modeling behavior.
Yeah, we we think that the charging station that's available to staff and visitors is a great modeling of behavior too. Most definitely, and then I should also note that Daya just sent me a note to remind me that the. We did update the N R P C website to include a home now for the Declaration of Inclusion and all the. Justice Diversity and Equity work that the commission is doing. So there's a spot now on the website for that.
I have, oh, sorry, Bill. I had, um, under the committee and staff reports, which I apologize, I didn't just, I didn't read until just now. Bethany's cutting herself short, she is the project, the municipal project manager for Swanton and it's not listed on her report.
Oh, wow, we'll have to, we'll have to get after her for that, because that's a big job right now.
It is, so she deserves, deserves to be noted.
Elizabeth is talking about the M B U sidewalk connection project in Swanton that Bethany is the project manager for. It's had some challenges that aren't her, that that aren't hers, but she's trying to manage and fix.
Wow. This is a collection of very committed individuals doing so much to help so many. Thank you all. And to that end, we have leadership and we now turn to the election of officers. And was there a decision, I remember we were talking about who would present this tonight? Is Yvonne doing that? Okay.
Bill, so the nominating committee has gotten together and we have come up with a slate of nominees. For fiscal year twenty twenty three. And it's as follows, Chair Bill Irwin, Vice Chair Lynn Douglas. Secretary Andy Olling, Treasurer Harold Garrett. Chair Personnel is Lori Rupel. Chair Project Review is Bob Berman. Chair Regional Plan and Policy Committee, Elizabeth Nance. At Large Member on the Executive Committee, Rowena Brown. And Youth Member to the Board of Commissioners for both Franklin and Grand Isle County are vacant. Are there any additions, subtractions or extensions to the slate? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting this slate of nominees signify by saying aye.
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 All those who oppose signify by saying aye. Looks like we have approved the the slate for the fiscal year of twenty twenty three. And we will move on to the Northwest Planning Commission's representatives. So we've also have a nominating slate for here, the suggested representatives are as follows. The Vermont Economic Progress Council is Albin Vogel. The Green Mountain Transit is Catherine Demetrick for Franklin County. Bob Berman for Grand Isle County and Elizabeth Nance as an alternate for both counties. Are there any additions or subtractions or extensions for this slate? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting this slate for the representatives signify by saying aye.
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 All those who oppose, nay. Looks like we have our slates for the coming year, Bill.
Well, thank you, Yvonne, and thanks to all of you who have stepped up to do this work again for another year. Thanks to the nominating committee, you can see on the report on page fourteen, that's Yvonne Barclay, Albin, Colleen and Peter. For all of you, it's a substantial task to take on the work of these committees, to lead them. To be a part of our executive committee and I thank you all for the service you provide and look forward to working with you for the next year.
Bill, can I add that if anybody knows a high school student in Franklin or Grand Isle County who would like to serve as the youth member, we look for. Either a junior or senior in high school to serve in those seats.
And if.
They might have somebody from Franklin County, but I but I'd be definitely interested in hearing ideas if people have them.
So they reach out to you if they have those names?
Absolutely.
Yes, hope so, I I've heard from several of them over the years and they all like it and it's a really nice thing to introduce them to as a youth. All right.
Bill or Catherine, one one question about the youth, is there an age minimum or what what are we looking at, what's our range?
So I think that by law, say a junior or senior in high school.
Got it, thank you.
And really, you could be any age and serve as a quote commissioner if a town wanted to.
Okay.
All right. So we then move to the fiscal year twenty three overall work program and, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Bill, I didn't know where to interject it, but there's been some movement in the air at the airport. The Habitat Humanity Building was purchased by some individuals. They're going to try to turn it into a aviation education center. For youth to work on aviation as far as. The mechanics of it and the other portions. I guess you call it. A tower work or there's another term I should be looking for.
Flight control.
There you go, flight control, thank you. Use coming in and hands on as with a experienced mechanic to learn. Through actual doing these projects and repairs. That's the the scope of what they're trying to accomplish. And Catherine, what is it, the, the, is it five oh one C that you that they get, which is a tax free?
Five oh one C three, not that I'm Catherine, but they have applied for it and are waiting.
Okay.
It's really exciting, they have some mentors. Is it Cliff Coy is the is one of the mentors from the airport and we're working with them. We have an onsite visit next week to bring in efficiency Vermont as they renovate the building. They are looking for, they want it to be kind of a very community minded and I I won't get into, I I won't take up too much time, but they. They're very community minded, very mentoring. So it it's really very exciting what what they're doing and. Richard and I, they did a presentation at the Highgate Select Board, so if you want to see see anything, Channel fifteen was there. So.
There was also a write up in the Messenger, Elizabeth.
Yeah, Beth Crane is is leading this and she's an educator and she had a. Somebody with her that was was speaking as well and almost fell off my chair when I realized this kid is fourteen. So if you saw the picture in the Messenger, it's her and this fourteen year old and he was fabulous, so.
Presentation.
Yeah, there's a lot of, it's it's a really great project.
So I just thought I'd. Is this going to be, excuse me, is this going to be an actual A M P school or is this. Merely to introduce youth.
I think it's a, it started out introducing youth. And see where it goes from there if it if it get a sustainability to become a school in the long run.
Okay, just, just curious.
Yeah, on project review, there's been a lot of discussion about the airport over the years and it's really fascinating what could come there, so. Nice to see something very positive there and appreciate your sharing that with us, Richard, Elizabeth Barclay.
Brian, oh, it.
Good, Al.
Brian, Brian Dubey, can, I know the Air National Guard has a training program for youth. And I'm wondering, with your connections, is there anything that might link to this project in Highgate?
Could be, yeah, it could be, I mean. Yeah, they they run a summer program, they run a lot of kids through it.
Well. Bill Irwin here, I I do think that there's a shortage of pilots and. Maybe that's something that could happen there is a a training program for young people to become pilots. That's a good way to 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 do that and certainly have some good people here on the commission that could help with that. All right, so.
Always had, or did they for a long time have a program, I think it was called Young Eagles? Where they introduced youth to piloting and and actual flying skills, I remember George Coy speaking about something about that.
Yeah, Highgate is one of the. There's only a few in the country and Highgate was one of them.
I guess I just never knew whether that program was still in force or whether it had withered away a bit.
No, it's still there, but it's not quite as that, it's going to gain in activity with this project.
That's great, I I look back and really wish there'd been an opportunity like that when I'd been growing up.
All right, well, thank you all, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, which is our overall work program and budget. This is an action item, we'll need to vote to accept the plan. And part of this is dealing with our building, so is Harold going to leave this or Catherine?
Most of the finances, I'll leave to Catherine, because she's. Well versed on it, she's already been. well versed on it. She's already been through it three times with us. She probably doesn't even need to look at the sheet.
Okay, so I'll take it away then. So I'll just, I'll, I'll assume that everybody had a chance to look at their packet and I'll just give a high-level overview to hit some of the key important points. First, that, that the work program and the budget assumes that we're maintaining our current staff levels, but it also leaves a little bit of room. You'll see we have some room in the bottom line for making adjustments through the year and you may be hearing from us later to make about some adjustments that we will be making in our staffing. It maintains all of our current projects and adds some new ones, which is fully implementing the Clean Water Service Provider for La Moya and the Siscoy Basins. Fully ramping up the Working Communities Challenge Housing for All Project that we're working on and we are, we serve as the backbone for the initiative in Franklin and Grand Isle Counties, partnering with several other regional organizations and municipalities. It includes a new project to do health equity planning work in our two counties, which you'll hear more about. And then it includes some, some allocated time and funds for the regional plan update. In terms of the budget itself, you'll see that there's an overall forty-six percent decrease in revenue. And while that might look like a shocking thing, it really is because we are no longer administering a project on behalf of the state. So up until the end of this fiscal year, we've been administering the Grants in Aid Project for the state of Vermont, and that's three point eight million dollars that basically funneled through Northwest Regional Planning Commission. And we managed a local grant program that was statewide and the state is taking that program over starting in this fiscal year twenty-three. So that's the major portion of that revenue decrease. And we actually, in our other operating areas, we actually have revenue increases. For example, we got a base increase in our regional planning funds, which is a portion of the property transfer taxes that gets allocated to local and regional planning. And that was increased and those funds are wonderful because they're flexible, they're state dollars. The work program is very general and flexible and allows us to really meet our local and regional needs. And so that's a great thing to have an increase in those funds. We also have a small increase in our municipal assessments that the board approved back in October. Additionally, we have an increase in our natural resources line item, and that's all related to the implementation of the Clean Water Service Provider in Siscoy and La Moya Basins. In terms of what's not, what wasn't continued to be funded, the energy planning funds, which we got last year, which we were hoping were, was year one of a three-year effort, was not included in the state budget for FY twenty-three, but we were able to find other funds to continue to keep our energy and climate planner on staff beyond the first year. So we're really pleased about that. And then there was an additional increase in transportation planning fund dollars as well. In terms of healthy routes, that program, what used to operate at three employees, we had an employee leave in November of twenty twenty-one, so about eight months ago, and we didn't fill that position. Instead, we increased one of the two remaining staff from three-quarters time to full-time. And those two staff have really worked together well too, as you heard earlier, do some amazing things with that program. So other than trying to hire an AmeriCorps person or an intern to help them, we're leaving that at two staff members instead of the three, which it had been historically. In terms of what's next, so if you look at the long-term reserve plan, we do have a long-term reserve policy that the board has adopted and we try to set aside funds each year to build up our long-term reserves. The Finance Committee is going to be looking at that reserve fund policy and probably recommending a couple of tweaks to the Board of Commissioners that you'll hear about at one of your upcoming meetings. But we are in good shape in terms of long-term reserves. If you look at what we have for cash on hand as well as our fund balance. The other thing that the Finance Committee asked us to start looking at is refinancing our building mortgages because we do have one mortgage that, whose interest rate terms end in June of twenty-three. And so we're looking at ending that, refinancing that mortgage early before interest rates go even higher. And it looks like based on our current principle, we may be able to refinance using our CDs as collateral rather than the building, and that would give us an even more favorable rate. So thank you, Harold, for that suggestion because that was spot on. And then we are going to be able to be, start giving you different sorts of financial reports that probably most of the Finance Committee will see, but it was related to our project management system. And so we're pretty excited about that too. That is the highlights.
What's the delta between what you're presently planning on interest rates for that, for the headquarters versus what you think you can get in the marketplace now?
Well, what we pay now is, I have to look at them, I look at the repayment plan. So what we pay now is four point oh five percent and the last I saw the offer that we had was in the high fives. But we can use our CDs collateral and the, I remembering this correctly, Finance will go over the details, but if we use our CDs as collateral instead of the building, then I think it's two points over the CD interest rate. So it'll always be tied to what we're making on the money we have in the bank too. So I think it's a, seems like a better deal for the long haul. But something the Finance Committee will pull apart at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would assume then we need action on approval of the fiscal year twenty-three budget and work plan as presented in your packet. Is there anyone that would make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Richard, thank you.
I'll second it.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Catherine, can you go over your projection of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars surplus?
And over how?
How realistic is that? I mean, is it, is given your expenses and what you've told us, I'm just not sure how you got there.
So we got there by not fully expending all of our regional planning funds and all of our municipal assessment dollars, which are two flexible funding sources. And so the way we got there right now with this budget is the staff is allocated more toward the funding sources where we invoice for hours and expenses. And so the flexible funds that we can keep if we don't use them are kind of set aside at this moment.
Okay. All right, so I'll have another question later on, not today, but sometime in the future.
The, the Finance Committee is looking at that number to possibly do something with it.
Like what?
But it's in discussion.
Okay.
Everybody wants to-
Just a, a, a short answer to that, Al, is if you look at our goal for long-term reserves versus the amount that we have put into long-term deserve, reserves, the, the amount that we have managed to put away is, is I think just a little over a third of our goal. So there's always an option to increase the amount of money we put into those. But that again is a decision the Finance Committee usually makes further into the year after we, we see how variables work out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from commissioners on the work plan? All right.
Clarify that the motion included the repayment plan and the long-term reserve plan as well.
Yes, that's, that was included in my motion.
Okay, thank you.
And Richard, do you agree with that? Thank you. All right. So without any further discussion on the fiscal year twenty-three budget work plan overview and long-term reserve plan and refinancing plan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please say nay. And are there any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. We thank you for that. And very good presentation of the material in the packet this month. Let's explain, understand it. We then move on to Agenda Item Nine, the fiscal year twenty-three committee assignments. So these are also in your packet and we have those described here, the committee descriptions. And you know, I remember when we were together, we would pass around a notepad that said, you know, you could put your name for a committee. I've forgotten how we did it when we're remote like this.
We did it for two, two ways. One, if you're already on a committee, I assume you want to continue unless you tell me otherwise. And two, if you would like to serve on a committee, then you can either let me know in the chat tonight or you can send me an email. And I'll probably follow up and, and ask specifically some of you. It's not a requirement that you serve on a committee for the newer members, but if you are interested in serving on a committee, for example, if all this talk of finance tonight seems really exciting to you and you want to be on the Finance Committee, there's always space on that committee in particular as well as some others. Definitely please reach out. We'd love to have you.
Yeah, so again, if you're interested in committee as a new member, please reach out to Catherine for that. If you're willing to stay on that committee, you need not take any action. Catherine will assume you're glad to stay. And then if you need to step away because of other obligations or things in life, feel free to do so, but let Catherine know that. And then we'll have that collection of committee volunteers at our next meeting for ratification. And I would also reiterate, as Catherine did, that committee engagement is really wonderful. I, I, I find all of our committees, I've been on just about every one of them are fascinating and it's, they're also actually fun. You, you make friends and you learn things that I, I think are really valuable in life. So thanks to all who have and I hope more do join committees. And again, you can see on page twenty-four of the packet, the description of those committees, which black and white may not sound as great as the way they actually turn out in person. All right, so we are at the Commissioner Announcement. I'll, I'll start. Bakersfield has frequently had a Fourth of July celebration. It's not on the Fourth of July unless that happens to be on the weekend. So it's that way this year. We are doing it Saturday, July second. It is abbreviated this year because we didn't have one for the last two years due to COVID. We're trying to get back into it a little bit gradually. So it starts at six PM. There'll be food, there'll be music by multiple bands, and that will be followed with fireworks at the end of the evening. So if you're interested in that, please do drop by Bakersfield. We'd love to have you visit. Are there any other Commissioner announcements out there? Yes, Barkley.
Um, I finally got myself over to the first portion of the Siscoy Valley Rail Trail on Juneteenth. Rode up to Sheldon and treated myself to creamy at the stand. And the only parts of that trail that are not in excellent condition are the driveways and the dirt roads that cross it. I sent Greta a quick note, told her how enjoyable it had been, but I wanted to point out that all of her hard work has, has come to fruition and it's a wonderful experience. It's really nice to ride without big Ford pickups kind of coming up on your left side. And just as a personal note for all of you AAA members, this summer's AAA Explorer has published a really wonderful tribute to my wife inside the back cover. That was her dad's nineteen sixty-seven Mustang that's still sitting on our garage.
Oh, yeah.
Turned into what it is. Uh, that was it. Thanks.
That's great, Barkley. I, I actually get that. So I'll look for it and that's nice. Glad for you and
Thank you.
Glad too to hear the trail. I, I see it cutting through Fairfield and they're building a beautiful bridge. So there'll be some really nice extensions to the, the Siscoy Valley Rail Trail. So I'm looking forward to seeing it grow. It's a wonderful thing that's happening in Vermont. Northern Vermont will have a bike trail all across it eventually and it'll be really beautiful here. Any other-
I'm looking forward to spending a lot of the summer on it. It's a great experience.
I'll just piggyback on that, that Barkley noted that about the great management of the trail with the great job that our staff, including now Amy, who does it, does working with an amazing group of volunteers on the Northwest Vermont Railroad Council and the model that we've built around the Siscoy, the agency of transportation like that model so much that they're going to be applying it to the La Moya Valley Railroad, rail trail as well. So there'll be a similar governance and advisory group that works on the ninety-six mile, La Moya Valley Rail Trail. So it's great.
The, the only, the only caveat I might have is you have to know where the creamy stand is in Sheldon because there is not yet signage that points you in that direction.
Location of good creamy stands is a very important knowledge.
Especially in the summer. So you got fat tires on that bike, Barkley, or skinny tires?
It's just a gravel bike, so it's kind of intermediate.
Okay.
But I, a little disappointed, I'm, there's no question that I could have put my road bike on.
Hmm.
Which I've had for a long time. I just got the gravel bike this year.
Right, right. Okay. Great. Any other?
Oh, by the way, that creamy stand is called Papa Noel's. No relation.
Oh, well, actually the snack bar is Papa Noel's. I think the creamy stand actually is Big Mama's.
Okay, it's right next to it.
Oh, that's, that's great. Classic names. Good, good.
I hope they put the calories on those creamies so you know how to fart or you have to ride.
That's why we ride twenty-mile round trip to get the creamy.
Ah, yes, that's good. All right. Well, as usual, folks, I've enjoyed our evening together and we should mention, um-
That's what I was gonna just say. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, we have a special plans and that's for both July and August. We should talk about those plans.
So July, we are going to hope to repeat our wonderful meeting of last year by ordering the same weather and having our July meeting at Kilkere State Park and hoping to repeat our delicious food from Mill River Brewing and donuts for dessert. So stay tuned, but we're trying to work out those details and so July will be in person.
Hopefully it hasn't been established, correct?
What was that?
The date hasn't been established.
It would be our regular meeting date, which would be July twenty-seventh.
Would you move it up to six or six-thirty?
Uh, I think we did last time, yeah. We just started a little earlier and that's-
That's a good idea with the bugs, yes.
Yeah. And we don't, we have to wait to eat.
Well, that's sad too, yes.
Yes, and have some of the hangry donuts, which are so good. And then August, we'll be taking off as we usually do.
Right, right. And that includes committee meetings as well as the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners meeting. So some committees may meet, for example, project review, there's a possibility that we'll have meeting there. And just a reminder, I'm not sure Emily is on, but we should, Catherine, try to have a conversation before this week is out about what we'll do with that recessed project review committee to make sure that we get that in, in a timely fashion.
But Bill, I think it should be, we should at least plan for two hours.
It seems that that would be appropriate, yes.
All right, yeah, we'll follow up.
Great, thank you. All right. Is there any- Is there any other motion anyone would like to make for the evening?
Move to adjourn.
That's the one I was thinking.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned and welcome again to all our new members and we look forward to working with you and enjoy Fourth of July Independence Day for all of us.